Good evening. This is, I'm calling the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Hampden Board of Selectmen and the Hand Board of Health being held in the Townhouse Auditorium. I'd just like to say before anyone sends anything through the chat, yes, we are meeting, the Selectmen are meeting on April Fool's Day, and yes, it's appropriate. At 6:00 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. This meeting is being recorded, and I would ask if anyone else is recording the meeting? Dalton? Yes, okay. All right, thank you. The first item on the agenda is minutes, March 4th, 2024 executive session. This again was a collective bargaining session.
Motion to approve March 4th executive with out release.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And the other one is the minutes of the March 14th, 2024 regular meeting.
What about the quick cable one?
Yeah. 9:00 AM.
Oh, this is, excuse me, this is the, what is this one? 9:00 AM cable TV contract, oh, meeting, okay. The attorney is silent, I'm sorry. So previously, okay, we discussed the cable contract.
With our consultant.
That was it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next item is the Government Study Committee. Are they here yet? No.
Not going to do the variants?
Oh, yeah, excuse me. I'm all confused with this new setup.
Oh.
Public hearing for septic variants. I'll turn the meeting over to the Chairman of the Board of Health.
Well, thank you, Mr. Davenport. Thank you for your service. Basically, we have a variants and, I think you have the folder, actually. I don't have the information. You're kind of left.
I didn't have information on it.
So you put it in there. Unless, unless.
It's in the table.
So. Actually, the engineer here, well, he was here.
We want the right answer, I think. Finn McCool is the man to give it those. I'm going to turn this over to our health agent, Finn McCool, with your permission.
Yep.
Thank you.
Hi. So the property in question is 405 Main Street, and with us is Neil, it looks like he's connecting to the audio. But the request is a reduction to the wells of three of the abutting properties to 405's beach field. You want to get 100 feet, but this property is so small and tight, it's basically putting the, he's requesting to put the beach field essentially back into the same spot, which is really the only feasible location on the water. But because it encroaches on the neighboring wells, has to go to the public hearing before you guys to give the final sign off.
We have the boat. Now, how many variances, because of the distances, will be required? I mean, how many wells are inside the 100 feet?
Three of them.
Okay.
Yeah, so three abutting properties right around that property.
Pretty tight, I think. We're all sick of that. Now, are any of them under 50 feet?
I thought you might have had the paperwork, but it lists them right there. I don't have it either.
Like Jane told me today, she was pretty sure none were under.
Yeah, I think the closest was 62 feet, maybe. But ideally, I don't know if I want you to have 100 feet, but it allows for the variances in situations like this. It's not very often we've come across three properties all needing a reduction to their wells. But like I mentioned, this is, system's going right back into the same spot. They have to dig out that whole system.
I mean, that house is.
It'd be costly.
That house is pretty old, too. It's been there for quite a long time, so.
Right.
I think everything was built around it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
This is the first one I can recall where they've actually talked about digging it out in the same spot. They haven't been able to find another spot. But I think as more and more systems fail, as they get older, you're going to see more of this impact, I think, especially in like Sessions area, down there.
And the abutters have all been notified.
Again, there's no change in impact because it's going right to the same spot.
Right.
We're all familiar with the house, Peter's house on Main Street.
Right. You said the engineer was on?
Yeah, it looks like he was having some technical problems, but he probably would have said the same thing. It's probably the only feasible location to keep this house essentially not having bathroom.
Yeah, he's no longer on.
He's not here anymore.
Motion to approve variants as presented.
Do we have to do three separate ones?
We have three separate ones, yes.
Do we need addresses then?
You don't even have it. If this guy was on here, he would have the relevant information.
I didn't bring my office keys. Yeah.
Do you have his number?
Yeah.
Why don't you call him, put him on speaker, so at least, because I'd like to have, I'd like the distances.
He would have been here, I just know that he's at another meeting. That's why he's not here.
Let me give Eric a little more time to wait for his crew. I guess you're it.
I notice Michelle's on.
Michelle's on. Cut the cards and you've lost.
Yeah, short stick.
I'm having much luck here, but. Hey, Neil, I'm going to put you on speaker if that's all right. I just need the addresses of the abutting properties.
And the distances.
And the distances. All right, I'll put you on speaker here with the select board.
Not yet.
This is, can you hear him? This is Neil Jackson. He's the designer of the septic system. Neil, I already explained to them the reason for the variants. We're just looking for the property numbers and the distance setbacks for each of the properties.
Okay, so for 405 Main Street, this is for Peter Lindorff. The offset to his well would be 52 feet, and the offset to Stevens and Mastay, residents at the 413 Main Street, would be 60 feet, and the offset to McCarthy's at 406 Main Street would be 90 feet. All the other wells, surrounding wells are over 100 feet. I did design an innovative technology system which gives a 40% reduction in footprint, so, which is allowable, and I didn't ask for any reduction in offset to groundwater. Wanted to get the maximum offset to groundwater. And the well on site, Mr. Lindorff's well was buried, it's right up, basically the cover is right at the berm of the street, so it was buried, so we dug that up and we put risers on it. You know, so it was obviously so to keep any, anything from getting into the well. It was, it was not a very good situation while we started, but we did that all raised up, it's a covered grade, and tested the water. We coronated the water, tested it, and it came back fine. So we did everything we possibly could, you know, maximum feasibility.
Okay, Neil, Neil, this is John Flynn from the Board of Health. So the distances, the distances you list here are the same as basically current, or if you actually reduce the footprint of the septic system, might even be a little better? So.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we're definitely further away than, than the current system, absolutely.
Okay, because you reduced the footprint of the current system, made it a more compact system.
Exactly, yeah.
All right. So, which is good, means that 50. So I'd be asking for three variances, one for 405, the well at 405 Main Street, to allow the reduction from 100 to 52.
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
A variance for the well at 413 Main Street, a reduction from 100 to 60 feet.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And the well at 406 Main Street, a reduction from 100 to 90 feet.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Neil, were there any other issues, or?
No, I, no, I think we, we did all we could possibly do to, to, you know, the best we could do to get it compliant, so.
All right.
Right, you know, so, yeah, we did the best we could. It's a tough site, I'm sure you, if you're with a site, there's just nowhere to work there, so.
And some great parking, too.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Could they be able to get the equipment up there? Or they could be able to get the equipment up there without blocking the road?
Might even come down from the neighbors, come down to it, I think, seriously.
Yeah.
Go around from, you know, come down. All right, Neil, thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, thank you, I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Ben, what we got here, anything new, or we're all good?
Nothing's changed since.
No, you can get more money?
Yeah.
More money?
Working on it.
We're actually a little concerned about some of the things we're seeing from the state.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah. No changes as of yet.
As of yet.
As soon as I hear anything, if anything, I should let you know.
Okay, because we amended our budget based on the numbers you gave us for next year.
Yes.
To cover the shortfall, projected shortfall for the FI. We put in a little extra right there.
Yeah, we put a few thousand extra. But doesn't mean you get to spend it.
Right, right, right.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Jeez, cramps, thanks. Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Yes.
Oh, no, Keith, it's the front row.
He was being respectful.
Want to unmute Michelle, she's on Zoom? All right, the Government Study Committee, ladies and gentlemen.
Here we are.
Aye.
So what would you like to know?
I'd like to know what your warrant articles.
So you want to know more?
Yeah.
I, before we start, I would point out that there are only warrant articles when you make the warrant articles. They're just proposals at this point.
Yeah, so they're part of your report, a suggestion that warrant article should be generated?
Exactly. What we were charged with was a report with recommendations, and so in effect, the warrant articles are proposed, but there are recommendations, too.
Which is the first opportunity you've had to grant to us.
Bring it to them.
Although you brought it to Bob weeks ago.
We started March 6th of '23, and we finished.
No, I meant about the warrant articles. You brought it to the town administrator and said, I want these in the warrant, but didn't have an opportunity to come to the Selectmen and bring that report back.
Yeah.
Meet every week, there was plenty of opportunities.
Well, we were running out of time, I mean.
Well, I have to say, your schedule has been great. I mean, you guys have been working every week on this, right?
Yeah, and lately, I mean, it was every other week for the majority of the last year, but over the last two months, it's been almost every week. So I think we kind of got a little surprised by the, by how quickly the end came. So when we found out that the warrant was closing, we had to really, that's why we started meeting every week, basically, to try to get this done so that we could put something forward. So it wasn't that we didn't meet with people because we chose not to, it was just we were running out of time. We basically ran out of time. But we did get it done, so.
Yeah, the warrant articles were response to Bob's email saying, hey, call for warrant articles due March 15th. So we ran them by rows and submitted them on March 6th.
Well, I have to say, I read your report, and I thought it was pretty comprehensive and of great interest, and a lot of interesting things in there, so. So the first one is, the first proposal that you're making as for a warrant article is the elected town, again, elected town, change elected town clerk to appointed town clerk. That's Article 22.
Well, I'm looking at.
We don't know your order, we haven't seen.
So propose number one is increase select board from, select them from three to five.
Okay, three to five. Background?
Well, as the report notes, we spent a lot of time discussing this, and throughout most of the year, we were really on the fence about which way to go, but as we came into the end of the year, and we were discussing the, you know, switching from elected to appointed, we felt, like the report says, concentrating more power and authority with the board of three. We felt that a board of five would be better aligned with moving towards appointing, like, town clerk, treasurer, et cetera, et cetera.
How many communities our size are three versus five?
Per the DLX report, I think it's a 50-50 split.
At our size?
Yeah.
Under 10,000?
Well, we didn't.
Because I can't think of any around here. I mean, I know, I'm familiar with Ludlow and Law Meadow, but they're quite large.
Does Natalie have five?
I don't know. I have a spreadsheet, but it's in another folder.
Do your thoughts where if we go from three to five, when we, if the town chooses to go appointed versus elected, you thought it would be a greater voice for candidates?
Yeah.
The other thing that was a concern to some of us is that the workload seems fairly, fairly large, and dividing it among five people would lessen the workload for each of you, plus the obvious that the open meeting law would allow two people to actually talk. I mean, not that, I'm sure you guys occasionally run into each other in the grocery store, and it seems stupid that you're not allowed to talk to each other. I mean, obviously you do, but.
Well, I think, having, having served a while, I think the key thing is not to make decisions without being in an open meeting.
Sure.
If I bumped into Craig or Don and say, hey, next week, can we talk about Mill Pond?
Sure.
And Don would say, you know, good idea, let's put it on the agenda. In my mind, that's not a violation of open meeting. Maybe it is strictly, but I don't think in any sense it is. Eric, I think your point is well taken, maybe years ago, but I think the action the town took five years ago by getting a full-time town administrator has lessened the load on the board of selectmen, and allowed us to basically allow day-to-day operations and bringing the board back into, I don't want to say the, or directors, something like that, but allow us to concentrate our workload on the more important things. And I want to say what Brian does is the mundane stuff, you know, but he does run the day-to-day operations.
Yeah, that's right.
And then the timing of a couple of these, if I can make a point, is that you reference, if we change to an appointed official, and the Selectmen would have more to do, therefore with that. The problem here is that, what if this passes and the other one fails? Then you've increased the board, so maybe it should be staggered, and i.e., does it make that much of a difference if it's six months off? Because it's going to take time, per your proposal, to do the appointed thing anyhow.
Absolutely true.
So it seems like the appointed thing is part of your, I don't want to say rationale, but part of the impetus to get the numbers up. So I would suggest that maybe that might be a two-step approach, because in my mind, there doesn't need to be five, because we have a town administrator, and if you don't change the more people under the Selectmen, there doesn't seem to be a reason for that either. So it seems like maybe you put the foundation in first before we put the second floor on. Just a thought.
Can I play devil's advocate for one second? Your, your comment, and I think it was valid, about being able to not violate open meeting law with having Selectmen talk. Do you think so, and I'm not saying I think this or not, that it has the opportunity for people to create more of an alliance against other people in that situation?
With five versus three?
Five versus three.
I personally think it's the exact opposite.
You do? I would just wonder, because now you're.
Five people, if you're, you have to have three in agreement to do anything. Now, that could be also looked at as a negative, because to have more people in agreement might be harder to do, but I think all of our articles, some of them work with each other, but they all stand on their own independently also. So it's not necessarily that if this one doesn't pass, then this one's not necessary. I think we all thought independently, each of them made sense on their own. Some of them do dovetail with each other better, but with a, with a three versus five, for me, I mean, just from doing, just from this committee, let alone the responsibilities that you all have, I know that if we were to do this again, and they said it's going to be a committee of three, I wouldn't be interested in, that's just, it would be too much. We needed, all of us, to pick up loose ends, and you can handle this, you can handle that. We could communicate in between meetings, because we weren't violating open meeting law with the five of us. And how this went, and working on a committee really led me to believe that five would be better for the future when you're looking at people joining, potentially looking to run or get on the board. If there's five and you're sharing the workload with four other people, if you have to miss a meeting, you can still, it's not as much of an impact if you have, if you're missing 33%.
Right.
If one of you can't come versus having one person up, because we weren't all able to come to every meeting, and not having one of us there didn't derail everything. So, I mean, and again, it's my first experience volunteering or being put on any kind of committee or anything. It was a good experience, but it was good because we had, in part, because we had so many people that were sharing the load, so. I know we've had three forever, and it's not necessarily, I think a lot of our recommendations, and I don't want to speak for everybody, but a lot of our recommendations, it's not that it's a referendum on how things have gone, or, you know, that we're trying to say that we need to change because this has been a problem. It's what's going to be best going forward in the future. So I don't, when I'm reading through some of these things, I, I don't want people to take it as we need to change because this has been bad. That's not, in my mind, that's not why we recommended things. It's not because there was a problem and we need to fix it, so much as things are changing and what's going to put the town in the best spot five years from now, 10 years from now.
You want a future proof of it.
Right. So, because there's going to be some natural changes that are going to happen in our.
But let me make this point again, you talked about if your committee was three versus five, how much of workload would be, but if you had had this full-time person doing the work, would that have changed your mind? You're just coming back in, and okay, here's everything, and you had Donna acting as that bit of it, too. So, again, I make the point that I think that has been addressed, some of the points you made, the thing about the increased workload, by the town taking the action, as many of the towns have done, by getting a full-time town administrator. You worry about the Selectmen, three part-time people, not being able to handle the day-to-day, and that is a good concern, but the town did address that before, and they're paying six figures to somebody to do that job. And I worry that it might be perceived that, well, we need to get more Selectmen because this full-time guy can't handle it, and we don't think that's the case at all.
We're not saying that.
I didn't say you.
Okay.
But one thing, when we met with the, with the former government.
Yeah.
The MA people, one of the things that they told us, this was early on, that really stuck in my mind, was, they, one of the things that they had said was, a town, the best way to function for a town with a strong town administrator was with a board of five. And I was already thinking that anyway, and there were some reasons why they, why, I think there's reasons why for that, but what you're saying ties into what they said, which was to have a full-time, strong town administrator, it actually works better when there's a five-person board. So that was another, I mean, there was a lot of different, it wasn't one specific thing that we said, this, we, this is why. It was a bunch of different reasons, and when we, we went all, we went back and forth on it a bunch, but in the end, when we had all of our information and we looked at it as a whole, our feeling was that it would be better with, that it could be better with, with a five-person board for a variety of different reasons. Maybe, I mean, if the town doesn't want that, then they don't want it.
See, the best is, I want you, but you can't serve. No.
I'm, I'm ambivalent about whether it's three to five, because it's not the, it's not so much the workload, it's the decision load, you know, to have the time to really, you know, the town administrator gives us, you know, we get packets or something like that, you know, the time to read it and think about it, and maybe do a little research on the site. It's the decision load as opposed to the workload that I, you know, so. All right, let's move on to town clerk, from elected to appointed. My view, I, I think that, my view is, I, I think that, I would agree with that. I think all those positions, we've had people who've served many years and have done excellent jobs and are great at it and know, and all that stuff, but again, we're talking about the future, and who knows what the future brings. And I think if you, the board, I'm appointing someone, gives us more flexibility and they get a professional in there, and it's the same thing with the treasurer, collector. I think they've all done great jobs, they've been here and done it, and they put in the extra time and everything else, but.
And if it was 10 years ago, maybe it wouldn't be part of any discussion.
Yeah, I know, you know, things have changed. The clerk's job has changed so much in the, with the state laws and everything, it's just.
Well, this is something.
So overwhelming.
It's something my dad brought up 20 years ago, but again, we've been very fortunate, people in these jobs do a great job. And I think somebody else mentioned, it might even been Donna, mentioned that nothing prevents the board from reappointing the same people that served now as the appointed people.
So this would be effective 2025.
If they need to run.
Those positions now, still want to be in those positions.
We could reappoint them.
But should they choose not to, the biggest gain for the town is that by going to appointed, you are no longer limited to someone who lives in Hampden.
Right.
You can, you know, like Don, to Don's point about, you know, the skill set and the training and all of that experience that goes with it, the town would therefore be able to choose from a wider candidate.
Have you looked at any of?
Can provide a job description.
Have you looked at any of the budgeting process? If we expand that to non-residents, does that change the criteria for the wage scale?
We specifically avoided talking about effects on the town budget.
Okay.
I think it's decided that doubt really wasn't.
It shouldn't be part of your charter, but I think we did hear also from the town accountant as a, when he retires, he told us, be expected that you're going to get a huge.
Competitive salary for qualified.
Current accountant for $40,000.
Yeah.
And when I look around other towns, 80 is going rate.
Right.
I think that's certainly a valid concern of Craig's, that if we go this.
That would be true almost no matter what.
Yeah.
Even, even if you got another person to run in town, they're not going to do it for Dick's salary. Not, I mean.
You're not?
No.
You won't go?
I mean, I'm not qualified.
And again, that goes back to my point, we've been very lucky that people running are qualified.
Absolutely.
Right, and they've grown with the position, too. So, you know, finding somebody that can just come in and do the job requires quite a skill set, and with that skill set, he has the salary.
So these two articles really, 25 and 22 really.
Tad's got a question.
Go together.
Yeah.
Am I being in favor of those two?
Tad's got a question.
Go ahead, Tad.
You kept going Thad and Tad. This is not, yeah.
If you go to appointed, is there a specific language as to what, what the campaign required or his requirements for the job would be that we don't get? I know there's other towns, other scenarios where we've had a guy's cousin's daughter got put in as a certain job. I mean, you're saying if you're going to do appointments.
Well, at least we like the Collins report, basically.
Yeah, we'd create a job description.
Right.
You know, we'd look at other towns, create a job description.
We probably have it now with the Collins report.
Yeah.
There's a background, there's a requirement, like nepotism, all of that stuff is an issue in the right.
I don't think so. I mean, it's like anything else, like. I mean, it's like anything else, like the assessor, the whatever, you have certain requirements. Heck, if you're, some of these, you require bonding for some of these jobs.
Yeah.
Okay.
But you're still, you know, maybe, you're still in the running. Don't think that.
I love that I threw that, but anyway, I asked a question on the outside.
All right, so that's the, and we've, the same thing with the treasurer and collector, all that old position.
Are they the two separate articles?
The combo, the combined.
I said twenty-two, twenty-five.
We can't see what you're looking at. We haven't seen.
Oh, you haven't.
I was going in order of your report, but.
No, but it seemed like they're tied together, really. The rationale for twenty-five is the same as the rationale for twenty-two, you know.
What is twenty-five and twenty-two?
Twenty-five and one's the town clerk and the other's the combined treasurer.
I don't have a warrant in front of me to see that. I'm looking, well, I do have the warrant, but I'm looking at the report.
And in most towns, I believe that most towns have collector treasurer. It's like three hundred of the three hundred and fifty, you want to have it.
South of the county, clerk, treasurer, collector. Hoyok, I learned over the weekend, might go to treasurer collector.
And then these.
Well, can we give a twenty-six?
Twenty-six, yeah, okay. Electronic voting.
So what this is, it basically is a bylaw, what we're proposing is a change to the bylaw that enables another method of voting other than a show of hands. Then the next step would be for you guys to decide, you know, if it's appropriate to move to electronic voting. This is just the first step.
Does this mean I'm binding?
No, it only allows for it to.
It doesn't require it.
Yeah.
So, but in order to get to that process, we need to have it voted.
Right, because right now.
We don't have the option.
It's only a show of hands. So this opens it up to possibly have that.
Or a secret ballot, but that's.
So in the future, if the town decided to procure the ability to do it that way and the moderator decides to do it that way, you could do electronic voting. If there was a problem, the show of hands is still in the bylaw. So you can still go back to raising a card if, if that's what.
And it would still be in person though, right?
Oh, yeah.
It's all people attending the meeting and just the method of collecting the votes at the meeting.
Does anybody else do that?
Yes, a lot of people.
Just about everyone there does.
I was talking to Donna and Bob about that. And like I said, a lot of YouTube town meetings, you see people with that. The one thing I did mention, if there was a way that we could share the cost with some other communities, because we're using them two or three times a year. And you can't tell me that Tynesburg and whatever, not the same, because you talked about, you know, how to make sure they're charged, things like that, you know. I don't want to get into a lease program, but on the other hand, if three towns share them for the total of fifteen times a year, it seems like we're saving some money.
Well, maybe there's a company that rents them, kind of like.
Like a leasing or something like that, right.
The renting for like one, for like.
Well, the way, it was like, when we talked, it was buy or rent, but rent came with someone coming from Pennsylvania, setting up the whole thing and running it.
Pennsylvania.
When the end result really was, if there was an issue, it was like the cable wasn't in the right place.
So there's a market for it, that's what you're saying.
I use those things in industry. They're not cheap. You're talking about thirty bucks a piece and you're going to need one for every registered voter. So that's a hundred and fifty grand if you got five of them.
Technically, yeah. I mean, you could, we could take a shot and say, look, we've never seen more. That's why you're almost into a rental thing, you know. Right, but I mean, a rental thing, like the regular town meeting is a hundred and fifty people, but we're doing a school thing. We better call and tell them we need five hundred, right?
Almost thousand.
And there are places that do rent and lease them, but you're getting into some appears to be big bucks, but you could probably lease something like that for about ten grand instead of a hundred and fifty grand.
But again, maybe this is the second floor thing. Let's just get the foundation laid right now and give us the ability to look into it.
Right, have the ability right now to use paper ballots, correct?
Right.
Yeah, secret ballots, yeah.
So does that not answer the question or the problem?
Well, then you have to have somebody sit there and count.
Because of the recount.
I think the efficiency wise.
Well, I, no, I make your point, like technically, could you define these as a secret ballot? That these are technically secret? You could, well, it would be easier almost to change it and put it in there.
Yeah, the wording of the bylaw is, is pretty specific, show of hands.
Well, yeah, but the, and the secret ballot part talks about the town clerk and a paper and the whole thing. And then you have a yes, no, whatever. This is one of the ones where there's no harm to putting it in. It expands our abilities, so.
And the, and the, and the voting by show of hands doesn't come out. So if the town got three hundred units and seven hundred people show up to a town meeting, you don't use them. You can do a show, you can still do a show of hands. You know, if we figured out how many people average come to the town meeting and increase the number we have by X number percent or whatnot, then we could use it for probably most meetings. And if, but again, the question only opens to make it a possibility that you can't do that. So whether or not we should do it is kind of the next step, but.
Well, that's what the seven-member board will decide.
The, all right, so select man to select board.
Honestly, at the onset of our time together, this seemed to us to be a no-brainer. It seems like it's got a lot of heartburn for people, but, you know, to us, it's, it's like we're trying to move the town forward. And if you look around at other cities and towns, it's, it's quite often.
My question is though, does this do it?
Well, this came from Rose.
Yeah. That's my friend asking the question.
Saying it needs to be two separate things because of zoning in general, right?
From my understanding, when I, what I read about from other towns is there's only two ways you can do it.
And then you go to state.
One is you have a warrant article that gives this, tells the selectman to petition the state to change the name.
Home rules type thing.
Right, and then they have legislation, they change it, then you go back and change all the things. Or the other way is you, the town meeting votes for it, and then there's a town election to confirm the vote. So I don't, I just don't know if this does it.
The latter of what you said was basically, Rose said, you know, you have to do the planning public hearing and then.
Yeah, but the other, that's what I said, the other, any towns that I've seen do it, they do, they, they go to the town meeting, the town meeting votes for it, they petition the legislature, it's really just pro forma, takes a couple of months to get it through. And then the next town meeting, they say, okay, it's select boards now, so now all the wording has to change in our, in our general bylaws and our zoning bylaws.
So you think the article should be to petition the state legislature for the authority to make the change, basically?
Yeah, yeah, so I think the article should be.
Can you guys check with Rose on that?
I will.
However you, you know, if it needs to be changed, that, that's fine, but.
I think what Don's saying is twenty-three, twenty-four would be on the twenty-five if we do. The worst case would be on the twenty-five bet warrant.
Right.
If we got back from the, probably enough, it could be in the fall.
It could be in the fall, yeah. Like I just saw, Medway just did theirs and they did, they did the town meeting, the petition, and now it's going to be on their fall, a town meeting to change the wording and all the, all the documents.
Is that what Wolverham did too?
I think it does what Wolverham did.
They had to petition the state.
And a lot of towns say it takes a couple of years to change all the wordings and all the different.
I mean, the whole thing about the zoning, they picked all that up, that it's in the zoning.
Yeah, we were.
It could be in the subdivision rules and regs. It could show up in a ton of places. So I guess, I'll throw it to the board. We interested in then just amending this, basically one article to get the sense of the town to petition this, basically that type of wording, which we can probably get from five other towns' warrants.
In two seconds.
In two seconds. Medway, Wolverham.
North Borough just did theirs too.
So are you guys good if we do one article for that part?
Yeah.
Stay on the committee until next year when we actually bring the other articles in.
Well, I know.
Double your pay.
All right. Anything else on this?
That was the five, right? That was the five? And there was additional things that you thought should be looked at down the road, right?
Right, there's a bunch of other things.
Yeah, there's a lot of other.
Yeah, things that we couldn't get to, but we sort of picked up along the way in interviews and conversations.
Yeah, things we love to.
So what are some of those things that you think that should be addressed, you know, down the road that didn't make it into this round by you there?
As well as in the report, like appoint IT and facilities managers, non-partisan ballots, cross-training of personnel was one that came up repeatedly. And then, you know, in the end, we felt strongly that if we were going to stay with elected, given the new management, you know, landscape, that a recall election methodology should be put into place. Because, I mean, you can talk to Cliff, he will tell you about his experience. And, you know, if we're going to be hiring people that are unknown to the town and it doesn't work out, what are you going to do? Let him wreak havoc for three years? You know, like if it's a financial position or whatever, and so.
Oh, sorry, back up. I didn't understand.
Cliff was at one point talking about a position that was filled with someone that couldn't do the job.
Right, but you were talking about the financial thing. If we're moving to the financial ones to appointed, then the recall wouldn't make a.
And that's the big, if you're going to stay with elected. So we think you should go to appointed, but if that doesn't work.
You want to fail-safe.
Protect the town.
Fail-safe.
You need this backup, which would be the recall mechanism.
A lot of fans, right?
Yeah. And maybe you need both, you know, there's, I mean.
Well, you've got a few on phase B, basically, is what you're thinking about.
And then a standing, a recurring government study committee, because we had a year to do all this and it really was a short timeline. Looking at other cities and towns, they've had government study committee boards of ten where they've had time to break up into subcommittees and go off like in groups of three or whatever and do more in-depth studies. And they've had longer periods of time, three years, five years, and they're still asking for extensions.
We also talked to Bob Markle about it quite a bit, and he recommended that we, just basically every five years, implement a new study committee. If, for no other reason than just kind of to audit how well.
Do you think that's too long? I mean, there's a lot of recommendations that, you know, could be looked at in the next couple of years, you know, five years seems like a long time to revisit those things.
Yeah.
I mean, July, you should appoint another one. Why stop now?
So does anybody want to stay on?
Lewis.
Michelle.
Michelle, you, you want to stay on? You're not talking.
And then one of the other things that's in the report is communication in the website. Something really needs an upgrade and.
Which we've done.
Come up with ways to.
We do have that. We do have a new website.
And they do allow the work now that we've enabled, they will do more.
We do have a contract for a new website, so they're going to update.
We need to increase resident engagement.
That's always the talking point. How do we do that?
I read through the report a little bit that was on the website. One of the things that you did touch on tonight seemed to be this, some misunderstanding as to who does what. I think it was referring a lot between the three or five people on the select board and the town administrator, that, you know, current select board don't give the town administrator any authority, which I don't really see that, but that might be the case. But they were giving feedback that there was H R function, there was this and this and that and everything else. Did the town, the government study group come across an organization chart that shows all the positions in the town, all the departments, and how all the departments interact with each other? I would have figured that would be probably the number one thing that I didn't see in the report that really, if there is an issue like combining these jobs, how they're going to put more load on the selectmen, less load on the selectmen, this and this. How is the actual work flow through the town and how do all the departments in the town interact with each other? Because I, I, again, in the past, it was a lot of questions about, say, the fire department or the police department or this and that. And it's kind of like, I was asking questions about the computers and it was like, well, that's hands-off, they have their own thing going. That's what I was curious to see in the government study, but I don't know if that was looked at or if that was something that wasn't.
I think one answer to that, if I could jump in, is that I think Bob was constrained by being part-time. I think he did a great job. I think a great job for the twenty-four hours he had. But I think a lot of that is saved by the fact, look, if you're not working Thursday, things don't happen Thursday. And who do people turn to when, look, we're all in jobs and you want your supervisor, you want to turn to them and say, what do I do? And appease, that person is missing one day a week. It doesn't help the organization run well.
And your new administrator works.
Full-time. Full-time, right. So, but I think that's one of the solutions that helps that, that issue. You know, you need, like I said, we're all in business or have been in business, you need your manager there to answer questions.
The other thing is, we're not proposing that there needs to be a dedicated H R person, just that somebody needs to take on that responsibility for the entire organization. And logically, that is either the town administrator or I think we suggested at some point, we probably will need an assistant town, town manager. And maybe that's the appropriate person.
That was something we had explored last year when Bob was transitioning out, that the position that is currently admin assistant to select board, there you got me doing it, would transition into assistant T A. And I think something the board was kicking around when we were looking at the job description at that point. But I think we felt that maybe that was a little too much with all the personnel issues that were happening with changes, maybe too much to take on. But it is on our agenda, our radar, if you will, correct me if I'm wrong, Don, that that is something that we are looking to always, just like your committee, we're always looking to make things work better.
And just to be clear too, regarding this topic, it was more than just Bob. We met with a long list of people who work in the town and pretty much the message was clear that the job positions are siloed, like, you know, like this person's responsible for this.
I think that also goes back to your point of having elected people that can't, you know, they only answer to, say, you know, the residents, voters.
So cross-training of, you know, administrative assistants and et cetera, you know, so that should somebody be out for an extended period, things don't come to a screeching halt. There was a message that and H R that came through pretty loud and clear in the interviews.
Good. All right, anything else? Thank you. And April fourth, six-thirty forum for the public?
Right here.
Yes.
April fourth, six-thirty.
On that topic of town meeting, do you have a presentation? So you're probably going to get a lot of questions on the warrant, you know. I'm just, are you guys ready for Q and A time?
Please, sir.
Yeah, so we're going to be, we just didn't know what to prepare. We didn't know how many, if any, were going to be presented to the town.
Well, that's what I wanted to just quickly bring up. So what's our decision? So we have, at this point, five on our, five, five on our list. So we're looking at, if you get your copy here, we're looking to leave on what we've called Article twenty-one.
Twenty-one is what?
We look to leave on Article twenty-one, which is increasing the number of selectmen. We're looking to look at twenty-two and twenty-five next, but I would make them concurrent to each other. Because if there's an explanation, it's easier to say, the next two articles.
So talk about.
So it'll be like twenty-two and twenty-three.
Exactly, right.
Is the town clerk.
Twenty-two and treasurer.
So you can make the conversation generic to both, basically. And then I think we're looking at the.
Twenty-four and twenty.
Twenty-four would be authorizing the board selectmen to petition.
Petition the legislature.
Or however they're wording.
Can you guys just, you know, check with Rose on that? I mean, I don't discount what you're saying, but given.
Well, I think the two you have here would represent the next step after we get back from.
The next step, I think we have to do the.
These are correct, but they don't.
That's okay, I'm just trying to.
But they're a future town meeting.
We'll check with, I'll check with Rose.
We have six on here, though.
And then the last one would be the replacement, the electronic thing.
What number is that?
At that point, it'd be twenty-five, I.
No, twenty-two and, you said twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-five with the combo, twenty-four, so that'd be twenty-three?
No. No. So 22, 25 is now 22, 23. Because we want them next to each other.
Okay.
24 would be petition the state.
Yeah.
And 25 would be the electronic device. Basically, the two that talked about amending select board kind of go away because we need to petition the state first. And we save those for after the state come back and says, sure, you can do it. Okay, now those two go on the next town meeting. Because the state said, yes, you can do it.
Procedural question.
Sure.
Do we talk to the advisory committee?
Yes, April 16th.
Yes, April 16th.
Right, so they're going to defer to you to talk to the crowd that are going to be here.
Right.
And the over-under is 10 or 15 this year?
There's a few last year.
Bring your family. You've been doing enough, you know.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this tool, by the way.
Does that fall in with what you guys want, you all want to do?
Yeah.
Okay.
And your appointments and when?
26 or 27, I think.
Oh. So who's reappointing?
Especially the new guy. Louis, has this been fun? What do you think?
It's been wonderful. It's been a lot from these guys. And then as, I just moved into town two years ago. I went to the meeting and I got selected to be part of this. And the people that I've been working with, just, they love the town and I hear it every meeting. And they really put their best foot forward on this to, you know, make things better for the future.
Well, great, that's good to hear. Thank you.
Keith came in from a different place. He's used to growing up in here, those darn selectmen. And his dad came along.
Hey, I just have a different question. Brian, did the robocall go out?
Yeah, I got the text, but no call.
Got the text and the email, but no call.
I'll investigate it.
Yep.
Yeah, so.
I did get the results and all three of those went out, but our personal experience has found that some of the calls didn't go out, so I'll have to check.
Yes, so.
If not, we'll send it out a second time.
Waiting for the rates to go down a little later at night.
3:00 AM. Hello?
That'll make it go good.
All right, so where's that?
Right, thanks.
And you're zooming this one, and I did volunteer to be your Zoom operator. We don't have anybody yet.
It's non-interactive, but we figured people would join.
Well, it should be, we're broadcasting it anyhow.
Yeah.
Next thing on my agenda is the change of manager and the liquor license to Great Horse. Brian, are you there?
Did we need to vote to reopen the warrant?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
You can do the next because we still have the warrant. Hi, sorry to keep you waiting and about the confusion last week. So, changing manager.
Pretty clear.
We're straight away.
We're just, we sign it.
What?
We require a motion?
Yeah. We've got to sign.
All right. We'll authorize the change of general manager for the Great Horse Country Club.
Second.
All in favor? All right, that's it. We're going to sign this and send it off tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport.
Sorry to keep you waiting and confusion last week. Thanks.
That's okay. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I know.
Bye-bye.
Maybe get delivered up there during lunch or something, Don.
Well, I think they have to, we have to send it to the ABCC. Sign down the bottom there. All right. Next item on the agenda is reopen the warrant zoning articles.
Move to reopen the warrant?
Second.
All in favor? Hi, Patrick, you have something?
No, I'm just going to say that the language that I had looked at for the first line of Hillside has not made it through the Massachusetts legislature, it's still being proposed. So it's really nothing that we would add at this point. And we could do it at the fall meeting and it also wouldn't impact anything on our current agenda.
Okay.
So I reached out to the Representative Walsh from the PD to see where it was due. It wasn't clear where it was in the process. It's been kicking around at the mass house for a couple of years now, so.
Oh, boy.
So we'll see where it will.
It'll probably kick around for another couple of years, right?
Right, yeah.
So we'll do a little scrubbing on that and come back for the fall meeting if there's something.
Okay. And I had a, I had a proposal for a moratorium on the battery operated, battery energy storage systems, a one-year moratorium. And there's some discussion with the planning board whether they can get, whether they can have a hearing in time and all that kind of stuff. But I'd like to leave it on the warrant as a, no matter what happens, as a.
Informational.
As an informational thing. If we don't take any action, at least we can take no action. It'll be on the warrant to let people know what's going on.
That may be a good time to solicit people for the.
For the committee.
Add that to it.
Where are we currently on here?
So we're on the warrant, so we're going to do some changing on these articles, right? What else we have? There's another one there. Although, the Minichog, the high school warrant for the amendment is not going to be, but I don't, have they sent the capital?
I thought when they stepped into our meeting, they told us and they actually had, they gave us a paper showing how much our part was going to be for wireless access points.
But we haven't seen anything.
No, they handed it to us at that.
But that wasn't an official communication?
No, it wasn't, but they gave us a number. I was going to say it was like 40 for our part, maybe?
I don't remember.
It was pretty expensive. So basically, they're looking for a capital.
Yeah, but they haven't given us anything.
No, we need the line, I guess we'll hold the placeholder for that.
So we'll put placeholder. See, we got the, we have one in there, Article 20. And then try high school capital improvements.
Right.
So just leave it like that.
Actually, that's what it is. Because that's part of the agreement, Don, you said it's, there's a number in there too, right?
There's a number, they have a number.
Based on, no, a percentage or whatever.
Percentage of it.
Do you think 18 will be informational at this point, Fred?
Private?
Yeah.
Hundred percent informational.
The other thing is typically, and just, it needs to be that way, 19. The number is typically in the explanation part, not in the.
Not in the word.
Basically, it's something.
Not in the 2C part.
Right.
Not in the article, I mean.
Okay. Yeah. Well, we do like to put a little explanation thing also. We anticipate this will be.
And then what about the elected? We got that spread away. One cemetery commissioner for a year.
Yeah.
One cemetery commissioner for two years. Anybody running for these?
Four from.
There were three years.
Are those two new selectmen on there?
Did we move the water district one down in the list?
Where is it?
16.
16. Water district, I see the town voted rate appropriate.
Yeah, that was up pretty high before. That's.
The first 10 are pretty much boilerplate because it's the, and I think, you may want to check on the two North Road things. I thought one of them was dropping.
I'd like to move the water district in front of the land trust ones.
I'm fine with that because I got it. There's some, we had a CPA, well, I don't know if I do it now or do it as a selectman report. It is relevant to the warrant. At the CPA meeting, there was a pretty good discussion about this and I thought Jennifer and Sherry did a great job of presenting the need for this work. I think the biggest issue was, A, this is a parcel that's not created yet. They need to buy the property, they need to subdivide. And this is an amount based to recoup the differential between what they paid and what they can sell the subdivided other parcel for. And just in my opinion, which may be totally uneducated for that part, I think this number is way too high.
If you look at what we spent for Mount Vision and even Westbrook, it was peanuts compared to what this price is.
Right.
So I'm concerned about the prices.
I'm, I'm okay with the proposal and it's overview type thing. It's a nice idea, gets parking. I feel they're paying way too much.
And then there's, there's land transfers between a resident, too. That need to happen. You know, they're going to take a slipper here and give it to the resident, the resident's going to give it a slipper there.
Which they have an agreement on, that's fine, but the, it's just.
So what are you suggesting?
There was some conversation, and Brian may be aware of this, that there, one of these was coming off.
Those 13.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they're just leaving the CPA authorization, which again.
So they get a gauge if they can.
Right, right. But it doesn't promote the town, require the town to do any action. I think that at some point, it may be no action on 13. But I'm happy to go with Craig's suggestion that.
Move the water.
Water up to, basically, we have two, two large numbers on here, Senior Center and Water District.
And I also was questioning, should we go for full funding for the Water District rather than going back for it twice? Rather than, and then we're actually paying more if we do it in two sections. And then we just say, hey, take care of the project, get it fixed for the residents as fast as possible.
Well, it does give authority, maybe we'll get a better deal if we're doing the whole thing at once.
That was my thought, rather than hiring two different contracting phases, we do it all at once. And then, you know, like you said, we're not, we're not going back out for bidding for a second contract.
I say we go, I say we go for the whole nine yards.
10,000 yards, you sold. At that point, you need more.
More money.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Is everything in phase two or three, whatever, is still inside the map? It wasn't? Because did you decide, are we coming down Glendale on a full loop or not?
I think it depends on which way the engineers decided. There was two options, one they go around and move back down.
Then that's not on the map, I don't think.
That's not, we'd have to rezone it.
Right, so that would require another.
Right.
So.
For expanding the district size.
So I would just say, I agree with Craig to move 16 down to 13 and put a potential 14 in there for possible modification to the map.
Yeah.
But even if we didn't, even if we didn't get modification, we could still do the money and then.
Yeah, we couldn't do the full project.
We wouldn't be able to start the project until the map is.
Right.
We need, we need the map to be able to do the geographical area.
And I think, didn't the map thing require state approval too, Craig?
I don't remember. I'm trying to remember when we did Main Street here because we had to change the map for Main Street.
We hadn't changed the map, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember how the process was.
Where's Darwin, you need him.
But do we have legislation for that?
I think so.
Yeah.
The original thing was signed up.
So I mean, that might pose a problem too, then.
Yeah. No, only just, you know, if we get it done quickly, it's fine.
Well.
And you can still do the parts that were inside.
Right, if we had the map, we had, if you did the map, then we'd go to the legislature, but we could still allocate the money for the whole project.
Well, we get the pump house upgraded, we can get the Main Street ones.
We could still do it phase one, but still, still have the money to complete phase two ones.
If we need it, right, if we don't spend it, then Dick just.
Well, the problem is, you know, Greg Craig said maybe there's some savings by contracting one guy and it might.
And we all know prices aren't going to go down in the next year.
No, so.
And I think it sets us up for success to get it done sooner than later. And then we're saving that money on testing.
Oh, definitely with the state, too. They're going to, very favorable, in fact, we took positive action.
All right, so we're going to.
So with that being said, I would make a motion to close the warrant again and allow the town administrator to do the readjustments authorized by the board.
But we're going to go for the full amount.
Correct.
2.2 million.
But again, that's the language here.
Yeah, yeah.
But add a second article for.
For the.
We need to see that.
Copy it from three years ago, two years ago.
We need a final price, though, too, I think. I don't remember what it was offhand, but.
No, but that's not the article.
We don't need it, we don't need it for the.
But that's not the article.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll take that back. With that number there, that may require an override question, yes. So we may need to copy the same language as Senior Center.
Senior for the.
Add another question to the ballot.
Right.
Because if you're at the two-point something, that's definitely outside, definitely outside. Well, he could service it inside the levy limit, but I don't think he'd borrow anticipation without authorization.
Right, yeah. The only problem is the DEP mandate, what happens if it gets voted down? And then what do we tell the DEP? You said it has to be an override question, right?
Yeah, it's a town.
And then what if the town votes it down? Then how do we fund that project for the DEP to satisfy their requirements?
Then we have a special town meeting for the.
Yeah, I guess.
We go for the lower mark.
Right.
Yeah, we can call a special town meeting anytime we want.
Right.
Can I just add something? I had an email from the town clerk and said that we're missing a one-year Board of Assessors appointment on the election.
Oh, really? I thought Jason wasn't the guy up this year? No? Okay. So I know they have somebody interested in running for.
Assessors.
The open spot. So I guess that's one year left on that term.
Right.
And I think, is it Bob up this year? I think it's Bob.
Bob was up this year.
Running again, yeah. All right.
Go away looking for cemetery commissioners, anybody interested.
Jeez, if we didn't have that.
We got three people right here.
That would do it, darn.
I know.
Dad.
Got three right here.
Yeah, just three.
Come on, you're here every day, seriously.
All right, your motion is to close the warrant?
Cemetery commissioners.
What?
They're going to start appointing people, why don't you just start appointing cemetery commissioners?
Because we have to.
Because they need to say yes. Yeah, well, that works, Dad.
All right. Maybe change the name, change the title.
That's it.
We got a motion to close the, we got a motion to second to close the warrant. All in favor?
All right.
All right. Want to review?
I think it was just a couple of small changes here. So we put the actual FIN number in for next year.
Where'd you put that?
It's under Health Shared Services, wasn't it?
I have no idea that change to be made, but I don't know.
Shared Services.
Shared Services.
Twenty-five under Shared Services.
All right, Shared Services. Selecting salary, so.
Craig, are you comfortable with the, uh, the transportation testing number to one twenty? Are you feeling that's something that look, it's in there now, and if we need to change, that's what the fall is for?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right with, right with the pronouns.
You got Wildlife Control, you know. All right, you wanna do, um, ambulance? All right, let's look in your folder here. I gave you one of the, I think you should have one of these in your folder.
I'm not, if you're back here, I'm just not comfortable with that number. Why we're at, you know. Is IT, no, I think it rounded. I mean, IT, you know, you never know what we're throwing there, you know, something goes bad.
What do you want to change that to?
Fifty.
Huh?
Make it fifty, yeah. You know, hard drive costs more next year, I'm sure. Well, yeah, where's this done?
Probably in the back, probably in the back, you know, back, back in your folder. Oh, there it is, right here.
No.
No, no, it's not it, back of the folder. All right, so I have, so we have one year that we can extend the, the, uh, action ambulance, all right? And so the number that they have is three seventy-four, seven ninety-four. That's the top number, so the annual, right? And then it's, they predict a sixty thousand eight hundred and seventy-six rebate, and which would bring our net cost to three thirteen, which is twenty thousand dollars less than our original day one.
Do these rebates come inside our fiscal year?
What?
Do the rebates come inside our fiscal year?
This is what I asked them. So I asked them, is there some way you could work in the anticipated rebate? And they said, yes. What we can do is, and that's what you see the bottom number, it says the net annual subsidy, all right? So that's working in the rebuild. So they said, okay, if, if, if it's three percent increase, which is three seventy-four, and we predict your subsidy is gonna be, your rebate's gonna be sixty-one thousand, basically. We'll, we can apply seventy-five percent of that to your thing, and we'll keep it somehow, just in case it goes up or down. And that would, that would lower your, your budget, your, what you would put into taxes to three hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
Actually lower them while we appropriate this year.
Would just lower, we appropriated the first year.
Okay.
And then there'd be a fifteen, like fifteen or sixteen thousand left over, just in case it didn't make that, or he said it could even go more, I don't know.
Right.
It was gonna happen to the year.
Right, and that point twenty-six.
And then he, and then he also showed it if we, if we went for a three-year, if we wanted to re, you know, start a new contract for three years, what it would look like in both the budgeted and in the net numbers. So I, I'm thinking the way to do it is to.
Appropriate to three thirty instead.
It'll do the, do the, have them do the rebate.
Right.
The rebate.
Fold it into the.
Yeah, and, and they left a little bit of room there too, in case we.
Right, so we'll reach to seventy-five percent of the rebate, and then if it's lower, you'll get, we'll take it out the end of the year. If not, we'll, you'll have the money there to offset it.
So do we leave the, the current budget at three seventy-four, or do you want to lower it down?
So we would lower that to three twenty-nine.
Three thirty, one thirty-seven.
Three thirty, probably just three thirty.
Thirty, maybe even.
Yeah, and then I don't know if you want to consider doing a whole new three-year contract.
Um, I think we should have a greater discussion around that.
Maybe invite Mike in.
Yeah, okay, all right, so I'll tell Mike to think about this, I want to.
Mike's manager, that guy.
You have Mike.
Moranka.
Moranka, yeah. Yeah, I think we should exercise the one-year contract.
Oh, definitely.
Okay, and three thirty?
Yes.
Okay, so that'll, that'll, because we don't get it, we don't, you know, we don't, we don't get it till October.
Right.
Can we make sure, can we make sure we get that in writing though, just so we're not short following, you know, in case something happens?
Okay. All right, so that's that issue. All right, what else we got here? And so that's the budget. Anything else on the budget?
IT website.
Yep.
Um, were we comfortable with that number, Brian? For the website? I think so. And as far as what we owe currently, are we able to cover that?
So, so that's the question. Um, John and I were talking a little bit this morning. So that, that will cover the, that will cover the annual operated cost of the website.
Okay.
It won't cover the additional fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars to complete the upgrade.
Right, but we owe that inside the current fiscal year, and I think we talked about taking that along claims, when we can do line-to-line transfers after May first.
Okay.
I think Brian has talked, um, okay, we acknowledge we owe it, but we're not gonna be paying you for a month or so.
Okay. Yeah, I think the question was where that was coming from. Were we, were we using townhouse maintenance?
No, long claims, because we anticipate this, that's gonna happen.
So we gotta wait till May first though, for that to cover that?
Both those, right.
And then we're covered, good going forward then.
Right. I'd like to see a plan from them though, on, like we talked about, what they're gonna do for this money.
Yeah.
I want to see maybe examples of three other towns.
I don't want to seem just, oh, just a switch of a, flip of a switch, you know, and now you have the new website, bang, done.
Yeah.
It's not fourteen thousand dollars worth of work.
Right. But I'd like a couple, give us a name of a couple, two or three other towns we can look at and say, this is a fifteen thousand dollar website instead of the five thousand dollars. Great. Bang for the buck.
Anything else? What else we got on there?
Tons of stuff. I thought the description was pretty good. If we're gonna accept their resignation, but I mean, the board's decided that yet.
No.
I just keep pushing it back.
No one signed, no one signed it.
Yeah.
All right, well, the.
You shredded it, right?
But on the, on the description, the job is given for the, are we gonna figure a way to take out the facilities thing? I mean.
What are we gonna do about that then, you know? I mean, Government Study Committee says we need an IT and facilities person.
I don't disagree with them.
No, I know.
Couple of names currently working for the town that are interested in doing that type of thing. And I'm gonna let Brian explore if that's gonna happen.
Can they, can they get two paychecks?
There are people in town that do already, at different rates.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be a smart thing to venture into.
What does bring up the next question then, if we're gonna do that, should we quickly throw something in this budget for a social management person? Take that thirty thousand you just saved on the ambulance and put, I don't think we're talking.
No.
Except forty thousand dollar job either.
No, it's not a full-time job.
No.
Ten to fifteen or something like that, just for maintaining buildings.
Well then, but the other question is, you know, are we doing IT and facilities management, or is it just good to piece facilities management?
Unfortunately, I think what we got here, it's two separate things, you know. If you're looking for somebody who can go through the hardware of the town hall, the toilets, whatever, that's not the guy resetting the router.
I mean, the facilities guy would look at not just town hall, but he'd.
All buildings.
All the buildings.
Yeah.
Right?
So. I think there should be like a line in for, to throw ten in there for now, and if it's gonna be fixed during the year, whatever, but.
Oh, for facilities?
Right, yeah.
Ten?
Well, I think we could fix it later in the year or something like that, but I think you need to, but maybe we gotta wait for that. We need to at least put the line item here for that.
I agree with that.
Right.
You know, under facilities, Jane's got, you know, camera oversight, door locking, schedule, something like that. Would that still be facilities, or would that be, you know, administrative?
I actually don't see why that can't come under TA slash AA oversight.
Administrative.
Right. As long as we have good communication from every department that they need this thing, and that, and it gets back into.
Lauren does a lot of stuff now with, you know, calendar scheduling and stuff like that.
And there might be some.
I thought I want to put more on your workplace tomorrow.
No, but it gets back into, isn't this Wednesday your first thing, Brian? You said it was gonna be this Wednesday.
What's that?
Your first staff meeting?
Yep.
So I think we, they, there's an ongoing situation where information and scheduling is not making it to the town administrator and administrative assistant office. And I think that needs to be clarified perhaps in your staff meeting, that, look, you guys want to schedule things, that's fine, but we have to know. Just like some, that happens with different rooms here. This isn't the Pentagon, we don't have a hundred rooms. So, and we're not buying the Robin software to do scheduling or something like that.
You haven't seen the fallout shelter, have you?
That's a great point, the rifle range, we covered that off stuff. That was in Beck and Don's, we've got it here.
Yep.
Yeah, seriously. Back when you could take a rifle to school, requiring laws for practice after. Anyhow, so if we could, I would suggest we add a line item maybe under the first part there for facilities.
Facilities, then just putting ten thousand over now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, if I could just jump in for a second. So in terms of, in terms of advertising for the replacement of the border health coordinator, what do you think the timeline of that's gonna be?
Kind of getting another year and a half, I think.
What, what was, what's the official date in her, her name, her letter there?
Pretty much July first.
July, July third or something like that.
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth?
Yeah.
No, it's July.
Yeah.
Obviously, old block would be good, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we should probably really consider about posting that soon, so we get some cross-training and, you know, set a salary, where it's gonna fall on the Collins scale. Now, are we, are we going experience, or are we going straight?
Well, I think that's it. I mean, if you look at the current number we have there, and the fact that pretty much at the top of the steps here, we're more than covered. Because the grade is already set, and it's already at the top of the steps, so worst case, you'd match it, and best case, you'd come in a few steps lower.
Lower, okay.
Got that? Get that done tomorrow?
Yeah.
Why not tonight? Why not tonight? You're softy.
I gotta figure out why you didn't get a phone.
I wanna break him, I wanna break him in slowly. I'll, I'll text him around.
And you'll break him.
I'll break him, I'll text him around three o'clock.
Okay.
Are you awake?
Taking a puppy out for a bathroom break.
My secretary used to just set all her, come plug her phone and everything. Vader.
Okay. Anybody on?
Anybody on Vader? What do we got?
Nobody here for it, nobody. Okay.
Okay, all right. Well, Steve Tyler, poor guy's waiting on there. I'm just gonna tell you where I am on this, okay? The computer, the server is owned by the town, not by the department. The data is owned by the town, not by the department. The contract with Vader is signed for the town, with the, is with the municipality, not with the department. And so. It's just gonna happen.
Here, here.
We've got a contract with these guys, they're sitting out there waiting to do it.
It's the right thing to do, and I appreciate everything it's doing, and it's all that, but look, we're getting moved past it, and just, security is, it's not there.
We already authorized it.
Right.
Right.
So it's, we just need to tell them, implement it.
Right, so let's move on.
Okay.
Who's gonna authorize it to implement it now that?
That would be Brian.
Sorry, Brian.
You don't live in town.
Well, can we jump, let's jump ahead to MVP.
Yeah.
Steve, you on there? Steve Tyler. MVP grant?
I'm here, thank you.
Right. Okay, what's the deal with this, Brian?
Um, so to show, I met with Steve and Mary last week, it was Monday last week. They brought me up to speed on, on the MVP project. And they took me through what would be the end of this first phase, which would be, I believe, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a hundred percent design for the bridge. Remaining, there's still remaining tasks before we could get the, the bridge shovel ready, and the biggest one being getting through the chapter eighty-five bridge review process. But the, the current MVP grant does not cover that. So there's probably maybe between a hundred, it's probably around a hundred fifty, a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars left in work that would need to get done. So their suggestion was that the town would apply for a second MVP action grant, but those are due April twenty-fourth. So there's a proposal from HSH for, I believe it was six thousand dollars for them to prepare that grant, on behalf of the town, submit it. And hopefully receive funding to get that bridge designed to, to a point where it would be shovel-ready.
Steve, what's the over-under on this, if you apply?
I feel like your chances are pretty good, because I don't think they're gonna leave you hanging in the lurch, gotten as far as you are and not carrying it to the finish line. And I'm really kind of surprised we have to do it this way, because we included it last year in our application, where it was a two-year grant, but the MVP just, just wanted to do one year at a time. We missed the opportunity to ask them directly, but my sense is, is that the over-under is good, that it'll get approved.
We can spend a long claim to be appropriate for this type of thing.
All right, we have a motion?
Move to appropriate up to six thousand dollars for the purpose of grant application.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you for hanging on, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Best to Mary.
Uh, you're welcome. Good luck with your town meeting.
Check with Brian tomorrow, get whatever you need. All right, uh, concerto mitigation, reallocation.
So do we actually have money, or this is the money that we would be getting, we had talked about doing sidewalk design, and we're already approved for this money, but we have to tell them what we're gonna use for instead?
Yeah, they, I mean, they have a, yes, so there was an original award of two hundred and three thousand dollars, and that, for the sidewalk design. Apparently that is not going forward, so they asked for, they provided the town with the opportunity to reallocate, to apply to reallocate those funds.
Which we had already said we would allocate fifty thousand towards the bridge.
Bridge, right.
The in-kind contribution, which we could make that, and then we have a question of a hundred and sixty. Hundred fifty, hundred fifty-three. Towards something else. We've talked about an intersection study for Islam Meadow, Allen, whichever. I believe Bob looked into that before, I thought it was time, Bob, but it was probably PVPC he worked with, I think.
Right.
That makes sense. So there might be some documentation if you reach, if Brian reached back out to them and find out how far that went.
How far that went, yeah.
We also talked about doing a study over at the other intersection too, combining them two, the one on Summers and Maine, and then East Long Meadow and Allen. So I, I, you know, we had the resident come in before, and we, I thought at that time we were entertaining the option to look into doing the studies of those two intersections.
I thought so too, and that's. Where was it?
So I would move that we, uh, reallocate the funds for the bridge, match the traffic study at those two intersections, and I'd still like to put a, a light, or a crosswalk. Light here, at the front of Main Street. And then see where we're here standing. I don't, I don't know how much those studies are gonna cost, I'm sure they're.
I think I saw in the breakdown from you on the first hundred thousand, you already had money in there allocated for this other one, because you mentioned three crosswalks, and we've only done two so far. We did the senior, and we did the, uh, park. And you show in his chart there, there was a third one allocated. So maybe any shortfall can go off against the third one. But I think you already had another fourteen thousand listed for the third crosswalk.
It's possible.
Yeah.
I'm playing catch-up right now.
Yeah.
What would you, what would be your order of priority if these exceed two oh three?
Well, then we gotta take care of the bridge first.
The bridge first, yeah.
I'll study on both intersections.
Study on both intersections.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
ARPA review, we're always, did the books balance yet on that one?
No. That was a quick answer, and I think it's, I think it's accurate. Yeah.
So, it, this originally came up because I wanted the board to know about, about the looming deadline to obligate the funds, right, which is December thirty-first, twenty twenty-fourth. And obligate means that there are, obligate means that there's a, there's really a contract for services or supplies. On the books, so it's not just the, it's not just the board saying we're gonna use it for this amount of money. And then, this came up in the context when we, when we were talking about a funding part of it with the water, pardon me. Using some of the water district, using some of the ARPA funds to, for the water district. I wanted to see how much was left. And so I went back through the, the documents that, that I could find on Laserfish, and there's between, um, you know, depending on, on which estimate we want to look at. You know, somewhere around four hundred thousand to four hundred forty thousand. But there's some discrepancies in the account that I, when I went back through it and pulled the reports, there seemed to be additional revenue that was added above and beyond the ARPA awards to the town. And so, um, I, I reached out to, to Cliff to try to clear that off, and we stopped by today, dropped off another document, and it, it actually went the opposite way that I thought it would. And which is, there was actually a correction that actually put sixty thousand dollars of additional expenses into the account, which would drop, which would drop the remaining by sixty thousand, obviously. And then there's also questions around, I, I think you might have seen the spreadsheet, there was, there was some, some, uh, it's like we had preserved some of the money for, for costs that had, have not been spent yet. So, I mean, it could be anywhere from three hundred thousand available, remaining, so that still needs to be cleared out, for sure. Um, I, I need to ask very specific questions about certain entries that, that happened.
So you still need some more time to follow through on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would say the critical one on this would be to have that number prior to.
Tell me.
Well, advisory hearing, so we could say, you know, this is not much we're applying from ARPA towards Water District. I saw a couple of things, and I could pick your brains. The COVID salary thing, I find, I. We didn't authorize that. We talked about it, and I found different things, but I found no vote.
We didn't vote for it.
We did not, so.
Um, a couple of things, the Zoom licenses, I know it's a minor amount, but that should be out of IT. It should not have been ARPA funding. The original ones were COVID-funded, that made sense.
Yeah, right.
But then it's an ongoing expense, it's an ongoing expense, not ARPA.
No.
Why, and why it would have come out of there, I don't know.
And the bridging.
Was approved.
We approved that.
Yeah, but that money, when I checked with the chief, and he, and he got three thousand dollars per officer back from the state on another grant, so that should go back into ARPA.
Did he?
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that should come back and reimbursed.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Well, they come back and already wash it to the general fund, you think?
Yeah, it depends how they, how they accounted for it.
Right.
Yeah.
But it had to go back to ARPA then.
Possibly, or, or could have went, or, or could have washed to the general fund, we need to.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that goes back into our authorization. We authorized the, basically, the bottom line expense to the town. If some came back, the bottom line expense was this, not that.
Yeah, right.
So, not, basically not to exceed.
Right, yeah, it's supposed to be.
But it's probably better if it washes to the general fund, because there's no expiration to spend it. Whereas if it went back, if you, if you took the expenses out of.
Yeah, but I, I thought there were several things that we voted on, that we said, we'll take it out of ARPA in anticipation of getting a grant or being reimbursed, or, and then we'll go back into the ARPA account.
Tasers.
I think the tasers.
That taser's another one.
And I just see the final, there's the final amount, but I thought, to get them right away, okay, we'll do it, but when you get your grant.
Right.
We get the money back.
Right. Right.
I think a specific question is, did we get that grant?
So you got a few questions there.
Yeah. Actually, we bought those, but we were also getting money from the old ones.
We donated them.
We did donate them?
We donated them because we couldn't sell them.
We donated them to North Brookfield.
You kept one for yourself though, right?
Did you, you missed the tasing session they had?
I, I got one for myself to keep the.
For the dogs on your.
The coyotes and the bobcats out of the yard. Uh, again, the ambulance extension, we already took care of that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so town administrator report? Hold on that. Selective report.
Okay. Okay, so meetings this week, I went to CPA meeting, one thing that came up was a request from the library for money from CPA to replace two windows upstairs. Couple of concerns that I raised was, A, widen this come to the board first if there's a problem with the physical facility of the town hall. Point is made, well, this has been coming up for years, yes, we, we know that Bob applied for a grant, the state turned it down, but you're only asking for two windows right now for 6,000, I'm sure we can find that money. And the other point I made was that if you're going to town meeting for CPA money, that's July at the earliest.
Right.
If the board votes to appropriate 6,000 out of townhouse maintenance, which is appropriate, the windows are open next week, right? So I thought there was a bit of a, the process didn't seem to go the way I would have expected. That's, and I also, and I think Brian brought this point up, the new windows that are being proposed have nothing to do with historical. They're not even.
One was final invented?
Yeah. Yeah. I would hate to put the CPA committee in a, a position that maybe something was like.
Historical, right?
Right. So I think I did email a copy of the quote and like the proposal to the board that we authorize money out of townhouse maintenance, basically, to fix these two windows per the request of the library committee. And then at some point we get into communication.
Yeah, was it the request of the board of trustees or is it the request of?
All the individual. Yeah. I assume, of course.
For the town buildings, right?
Right.
Right? I guess it comes down to the org chart, who's responsible for the buildings.
Right, there is the point that, you know, well, there are many needs in the town hall, we're all aware of that. I believe Ty and Bond told us there are $4 million worth of needs.
I think it was $7 million worth of needs.
Yeah, up to seven, so, but right now we can take care of 600, 6,000, and I'd like the board to consider that.
Was that the official motion?
I guess I'll make a motion to authorize town administrator order two new windows up to $6,200 per the quote I emailed for the work upstairs on the second floor.
Let's get it done, we got it, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right.
It's the only report I, oh, building committee, we're having a second forum, I believe it's the 25th or, Brian, do you have that date? I know it's in the second, oh, sorry, the 30th. So April 30th will be the second senior center forum. We're also in receipt of Rita Vale's step down from the building committee and we'd like to obviously thank her for her service on that. Rita has been a person that's always stepped up to fill a need and she's still, of course, a member of the friends of the Hammond Seniors. I don't think at this point we need to fill that spot. It could be a lot of pickup at this point, yeah. I turn, if we could, I'm sorry, if the chair could do a letter?
Yeah.
Yeah, please, for the board.
Fab Rock, the committee met last week, they're.
Everybody met last week.
Everybody met last week. They're, they, they came up with the idea to not bring anything forward at the town meeting, but other than make an informational session, let them know that the committee's still going, they're looking into options and doing a lot of rock kicking right now, so. Put more information coming at the town meeting, but no, no requests.
I have to say, we are fortunate to have, seriously, when you have a couple like Craig and his wife, Madison Keane, you know, like last week when both of them were here meeting, I was here, was that Wednesday night?
Wednesday night.
Both of you guys were here meeting, we're lucky to have people like you all, we really are.
Need more people.
I know Brian and I.
I saw those kids running around, but you know, that's fine.
Running loose in town, but.
That's fine.
Brian and I had a lengthy conversation with the William Solomon, our person who's negotiating the, the cable contracts and we, we talked a lot about issues and basically we're going forward with seeking some kind of, what would you call it, some kind of payment for roads? And we talked about roads.
You talked about, yeah, the big access.
Yeah, but, but portico toys. And one of the things that he came up with is that in other towns, they've actually paid for like a Zoom operator. So we'll see what happens with that.
Right, so on the Zoom operator, Steve Hale, I bumped into him and he's looking for a little more definition of what it needs to be, I'm like, look, any kid in the high school can drop that. No problem.
So.
They have a couple of candidates that we're looking, that are interested in doing it, but I don't know if we'll be able to get them on board before Thursday's public forum.
Is Solomon looking into options or is this strictly renewal with Spectrum?
Strictly renewal. Because he said, basically he said there really are no options because no one's, no one's building out, you know? Because they're all going to fiber.
I was watching YouTube video today, they're talking about 10 gig internet being the standard.
Yeah.
10 gig.
Yeah, right.
One more thing, I was informed today that there is a Earth Day Eco Expo on Saturday, April 20th here at the town hall. The Board of Health is participating, which was a surprise to the Board of Health. Matter of fact, we were showing where our table is and everything, so our communication is, you know.
Going good.
Great.
Who's, who's organizing that? You?
Library.
Gotcha.
So as, I'm busy that day, the other two members of the Board of Health, I hope are.
What day of the week is it?
What day was it?
The day we're doing the road cleanup.
Oh, is that?
Oh. The 20th. Yeah.
Well, thank you for that, that information from the Board of Health, I appreciate your communication with.
Well, I was happy to be able, opportunity to bring it to you, thank you. Don't worry, Donald, we have shirts, I believe, new shirts this year, there's a new color. Heather Jolker is.
Transfer station yellow.
Transfer station bag yellow.
I think we did that yellow already last year, yeah, it's kind of off.
Just to cut up the old transfer station bags and put them over your head, it's nice.
Yeah, we're raising the cost. That will be, by the way, in terms of the, and we'll have the exact numbers next week. I know we do have the enterprise article on the warrant already, but I think we are going to be looking for a rest of the tax rate, yeah, because we're buying the bags.
Getting so expensive, yeah. Oh, and the, the master plan committees, they're having the community immersion group is coming on April 3rd, so.
This week?
What?
Wednesday?
What is it, yeah, they're going to be traveling this, it's the consultant, no, no, it's the consultant traveling to town, looking at the buildings, the sites and the land.
Snappy's is open already, make sure you take him there, okay?
All right, anything else to come, oh, I would entertain a motion.
No, no.
Oh, yeah, TA report, I almost forgot about.
Really? No. Last week, Charter provided the senior center with 15 tablets and $5,000 in a grant to improve senior technology learning at the senior center. Just a couple of dates to keep in mind. So, and for the debt exclusions, we need to, the, the board needs to inform, provide written notice to the clerk 35 days in advance of the town election. So that would be, at the next meeting, April 8th, the, the board would want to vote on whatever debt exclusion articles are going to be on there and provide written notice to town leaders, so those can make the ballot. So it looks like there might be two after tonight's discussion.
Right.
One stop for growth, that's the grant program, that, that we would apply for the rural development funding, the expressions of interest are due April 30th. So the two ideas that, that I've heard, one would be the, the TWB assessment, could be the TWB assessment that, that the board had talked about earlier, and then there was also talk, I believe, with about the water district expansion, trying to access some rural development funds, the engineer talked about that. So those expressions of interest are due April 30th, just to keep that in mind. And then sort of what's driving this ARPA thing is that there's an annual report that I need to submit for ARPA by the end of the month, so it would be great if I could get those things straightened out before then.
I think a key thing is that one-stop growth thing, we need any funding source we can. What was the number, Ty and Bond, for the school thing?
45, yeah, that was 50.
Yeah, there's that. He needs to make more, he wants to.
Right, and also Bob was always talking about the tip stuff too, you know? I know the state said they were going to use a, they were going to apply for tip on our behalf for Rock and Dundee, but they assured us that it would not impact any other time you ask, like, yeah.
Until it does.
Exactly.
I can follow up with, someone, I'm going to contact PVPC anyways about the.
They wrote it.
Don't want to ask about any of the projects.
Sure. Yep. All right, you want a motion to executive?
I gotta go, I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss collective bargaining with the police union. We will now return to a regular session.
So moved.
Second.
John, fun, aye?
Donald, that, what, aye?